All right, it's five thirty and I'm gonna call this Steenville City Council special meeting to order. First on the agenda, make sure everybody got a copy of the committee, council committee. Same as, same as last year. Do we have any questions on the committee assignments?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd make a motion to accept the committee assignments as presented.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Nix and a second by Mr. Cook. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Perfect. All right, next up is nominations committee, Ms. Smith.
The nominations committee met on April fifteenth. We had one applicant for the opening on Plating and Zoning and it was Lisa Pendleton. She was approved unanimously with a positive recommendation to council. Since Plating and Zoning is a commission, we do have to interview Ms. Pendleton for this position and she's here this evening. So Lisa, if you don't mind stepping up to the podium for us, please ma'am. Do you mind stating your address for us?
Five seventy West Long Street.
So I just have a couple of questions for you, quick and easy.
Okay.
Have you served on any boards or commissions before?
I have.
Yeah, which ones and when?
Main Street, gosh, two years ago, three years ago.
And then why do you want to serve on Plating and Zoning now?
I am passionate about the community of Steenville and the long-term growth and integrity of the community. And I just hope to give a little insight as a small business owner.
Does anybody else have any questions for Ms. Pendleton this afternoon? But I would like to make the motion that we accept Lisa Pendleton on the P and Z.
Second.
All right, got a motion by Ms. Erphey and a second by Mr. Nix. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you, Lisa.
Lisa, thank you so much for your willingness to serve.
Thank you so much.
And with that, that is the end of the nominations report.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Ms. Smith. With that, we're gonna take a recess from the special council meeting and move over into committee meetings. First up in committee meetings are gonna be the finance committee, which we are going to poll due to not having a quorum. Next up would be the parks and leisure committee. The chair is not here, so I'm going to lead that committee. Mr. Trussell, could I have you come up to the podium, please sir, so we can discuss what repairs, maintenance, or renovations are needed for Splashville at the moment?
Sure. So we just put together a folder. This is just preliminary information for y'all, basically, to give you some different scenarios and looks at different items that need to be either repaired or maintained long-term for the pool. Or we also gave you another option in there, which is looking at what, what other things could be in store for the pool. So if you, if you look at that, the first couple, maybe fifteen, twenty pages are from a company called Craftsman. It gives you two different scenarios in there. The one's a renovation and one is the construction of a splash pad. And so the renovation of the pool looks at the things like the playground and our zero-depth entry area is at the end of its life. The items on the current splash pad are at the end of their life and need replacements. So it gives you numbers on those things heading into budget season. So we have information on that. Once you get down into the repair and maintenance section, it looks at our main pool, our lazy river, our splash pad, and then just general facility maintenance. And it breaks down each one of the pools for you with quotes from the company that does most of our pool maintenance and repairs for us. And so it, it gives you an idea of the upcoming costs to repair and maintain Splashville, not the operational expenses. The operational expenses will be over and above those costs.
So when I'm looking at this first page here, we've got, the, the first two line items are for what it would be to convert it to a splash pad, correct?
Yes, so we worked with Craftsman. Craftsman does playgrounds, splash pads, all that kind of stuff. Craftsman had done a very similar project with the city of Lewisville. They went into a pool that was constructed about two years prior to ours in the city of Lewisville. And they brought that pool and basically tore it down, brought everything up to grade, and turned that entire pool into a splash pad that they now operate free, free of charge, all day long, every day, for about six or seven months out of the year. So it was an option that was talked about within the parks board and obviously that comes at a reduced expense long-term because you no longer have lifeguards and facility staff that have to be there. And the numbers they show on those are drastically higher than what their numbers were when they were operating as a pool because it's free of charge. It's, it's just like a normal playground in your park. So the city of Lubbock has done something similar. They took all of their city pools out of service and replaced all of them with splash pads, so.
And what's the season for a splash pad? I know our, what's our pool, it's...
You're gonna go somewhere, yeah, somewhere, probably some people open them somewhat, sometime around spring break and then you're gonna look at sometime probably about add October. So you're gonna be closed down for four to five months of the year. You'll winterize that pool. You'll no longer use chemicals or utilities at that point. That thing will get totally shut down and winterized for those four to five months. Right now, we're maintaining chemical operations and utility operations twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. You're, you're using chemicals all, all the time.
I can't remember who it was, but I, I heard it on the radio. It was, it was in this area that had opened theirs. It was like the first week of March.
Yes, generally, yeah, when you see spring break come up, that's when they'll generally start, they'll, they'll get them ready for spring break so that their, the kids have something to do if the weather is right.
So the, the next several line items on this sheet, that is to just repairs and maintenance on our, on our current facility?
Sure. So under, under the main pool repairs and maintenance, you'll see there's a big one there for the heater replacement. We do have heaters on our pool. One of the reasons you have heaters is not particularly to get the water warm enough for you to swim in. It's to keep the pool from freezing and having problems over the winter. And our pool, all pool heaters, they no longer make parts for our pool heaters. They're, they're at the end of their life. They're phasing them out. And so this is the cost to completely replace them. You've got manifold replacements. The manifold is a part that we use when we backwash the pool, so it switches the direction of the flow of the water. The manifolds that we have on our pool are no longer in production. They're at the end of their life. And so those need to be replaced as well. The main pool has, the main pool and the lazy river both have tiles that are popping off constantly. We're having to put tile back on. We actually had some tile repair done last year and even those aren't lasting at this point. And so that's to re-tile. The re-plaster below it is because of the company that's looking at it thinks you really need to re-plaster if you're going to re-tile and that would have to be debated. You'd have to have several people come in and look at it and see where we're at. Lazy river repairs, all those items have an asterisk beside them. They're all items that would have to be done in order to open the lazy river for this season. And so I think there's some debate there for council on what they, what direction we want to go with that. Splash pad repairs and maintenance, we're doing some right now because that's, even if you converted this to a splash pad, that splash pad would remain. And so the, we're replacing some things and getting that facility open, ready to open. And then the water heater is just general facility maintenance.
So I didn't, I'm just having these up my head, so it's about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, somewhere around there? Is that correct?
Just for general maintenance.
So what would this do for our insurance, our city insurance? Would it, it would have to drop it if it, we changed it from a pool to a splash pad?
We haven't examined any of those things.
What, I don't know, it's funny question for Monica, I don't know, but what, what are we, I know we're not making any money on Splashville. What are we losing a year on Splashville?
If you remember back from budget season, we were predicting with full staffing, at a full season, it would be over four hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
So we're losing four hundred thousand and then repairs cost another four fifty.
That's just your general repairs and maintenance. That doesn't include replacing any of your amenities, which is outlined on there as well. So if you're replacing amenities, the slide is the only one that I would have to get second opinions on. The playground is at the end of its life and the splash pad, for the most part, all those features are at the end of their life. So the renovation tab for that is another one point four million.
Any other questions for Darren?
So just for your guys' information, I've directed him, obviously, to get all the stuff open for the splash pad. Anything on the main pool that we have to have to, to open and so that we can get those done. I have not directed him at this point on the lazy river. I kinda wanna wait and see where our staffing works out.
Staffing almost doubles when you have a lazy river in.
Right, so if, if we end up with enough personnel that we could, then maybe we look at that. But if, if we don't end up with that level of personnel, there's not much sense right now in putting those funds in it. And then, not at the moment, because I plan for us at our budget discussions in June to kinda get some direction from you for next year on where you guys might wanna head on the big picture side of it. That's why we wanted to go ahead and get some of those numbers and that information to you now, in this notebook to you now, so you kinda have that and can be thinking about it as we go into our discussions over the summer.
I have two questions. Can you tell us again when the pool opened, when it's splash will open?
When? Two thousand nine.
And then, do you know about an average attendance a day at Splashville?
I can get y'all numbers on that, but I mean, it's, in the last couple of years, it's been reduced a little bit. I think that's a trend you see probably across the board at pools that don't have any deep water. They're just not as high use as they used to be and, which is why Lewisville converted theirs. Their usage was way down. Their numbers were, you know, their cost was way up and it made more sense for them to convert that pool.
Thank you so much. We'll put this together for us. So maybe this is a completely unpopular question, but if, if we were gonna look at doing this and not even opening this year, what would that, what would that do?
Limit, limit your expenses. I mean, as long as it's there, you're still gonna have chemical expenses and...
We're preparing as if we're going to open our opening weekend. Our opening week will be the week after Mula. Because of what Jason's talked about, not knowing about the lazy river and our staffing levels, we did order a safety fence that we're going to install in-house around the lazy river. We had to have it fenced off in order to not have lifeguard. Even if you don't open it, you have to have lifeguards on it. It has water in it, period. So that's another three-person crew. If it's open, you have to have eight people on that, just that feature alone. That's what Ellis requires and that's what basically when we go do, we have to go do zone validations, is what they're called. We validate every zone within the pool three times per year, three times per season. And those zones can change throughout the year based on sunlight conditions or whatever. And when we do the zone validations, it comes up with eight people. And typically the, I mean, that's a lot of people in that pool, but it's because of the bends of the lazy river and all that stuff, you have blind spots, so.
When did Ellis give our, their, uh, report on the examination?
When did who?
When did Ellis? That's not new. I mean, what I'm getting at is about a year ago?
We switched over to Ellis and Associates in lifeguarding.
Okay.
They came in prior to last season and did an audit of our pool.
That's what I'm asking.
And then after we got our two managers trained in Ellis, we got them certified to be lifeguard trainers. They come in and do all the zone validations and then Ellis comes in and does blind audits of our pool. And we were considered an exemplary facility. We didn't have any issues last year. All our lifeguards did exactly what they were supposed to do. So they'll, but they'll come in and do the same thing this year. We have to turn in all that zone validation paperwork to them, all those kind of things, and get everything ready for the year. And then they'll come in and do their blind audits three a year.
Who did we use before them?
Red Cross.
Did Red Qua, did Red Cross...
They don't do any of that.
Require us to do, have eight lifeguards on the lazy river?
Red Cross doesn't have a requirement for the number of lifeguards. Their requirement is based on the user load.
Okay.
So it's an occupancy requirement, not a, if, if we're gonna open the pool now, these are the number of lifeguards we have to have, period. And that was a requen, it was something we came up to.
It was a recommendation from a report.
So, but no, Red Cross is based on a bather load. Certain number of lifeguards per swimmer, per number of swimmers.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Nix, you have any questions?
Yes, sir, a couple. If we go to the splash pad, instead of opening the pool, what is the time, construction time, I guess is the right question to...
Probably about nine months.
To demo our pool and then have the other one open, which we lose the season, basically. It, because you're looking at the, it's wintertime by then.
When I talk, I met with them this week, actually. So when I met with them this week, if they started at the end of our season, they would be able to open the facility probably this time next year.
Okay.
So you're looking at about nine months.
What is the, the splash pad, if we converted to a splash pad? What is the, the maintenance on that? I know that you have maintenance during the summer, I mean, during the winter for the pool, for chemicals and pumps and all of that that, that continues to function. Do we drain the, the tanks or whatever on the splash pad?
Yes, sir. Are you draining everything and winterizing it? So you'll drain it all, winterize it. It'll no longer be pulling any water usage. It's no longer gonna pull any chemicals, any of that stuff. It gets more in-depth than that. It's something we'd have to go through with them when we look at winterizing it. But yeah, you winterize it, you're no longer using water, chemicals, anything, utilities.
Okay, so that, that lessens the expense.
There's some cost savings over that five-month period, probably by not having any chemical usage, water usage, electricity, any of that stuff. Because those pumps pull electricity and they're running twenty-four, seven.
Do we still maintain a perimeter fence around it even though it's free?
You could go either way. It, it really, it depends on the user. So Lewisville took down their perimeter fencing, no longer maintains a perimeter fence around that facility. Our suggestion is that for rental purposes and things like that, parties that people wanna have and rent out the facility, probably maintain the perimeter fence so that you could monetize some of the things within that facility, even though it's gonna be free during the day. You can monetize some things after hours.
Okay, but staffing would drop dramatically?
I've talked to Monica a little bit. We think staffing probably drops by about eighty to ninety percent.
Okay, okay.
So you will have to have people pick up trash. You'll have to have people clean. Bathrooms have to be kept up, all that kind of stuff during the day. Somebody has to open the gates if we do maintain a gate. If we don't maintain a gate, then no, it just, you, you push a button and start it up.
Okay. Obviously, you've done a lot of work on this. I appreciate it. We, we're gonna have some, a lot of hard vegetarian decisions to make. This is one of them that we're gonna have to do some looking at and, and decide what we think we wanna do best for the community. It's an amenity for the community. That's why we put the pool in to start with. The first pool that we had, that many people don't remember anymore, that's, that's filled in now behind the rec hall, that's why it was put in, as an amenity for the community. So we'll, we'll have to decide how much and when we wanna try to budget this and then try to move forward with that. But thank you for putting the numbers together for us.
Yes, sir.
Darren, one more question for you.
Yes, sir.
Will the size of this, as projected here by these guys, be approximately the same size of the pool area that we have now?
Yeah, it basically uses the outline or the shape of that, that area. It goes a little bit outside of it. It's actually a little bigger than the surface area of the pool.
How much, what, have, have we looked at all of, of additional splash parks or splash pads that are much smaller, for instance?
So cities, cities have two different models they use for this. A lot of cities are going to the bigger model where it's just one splash pad. You can go to some cities, even our size, that may have two or three. I think Brownwood has at least two splash pads in their city, but they're, they're maintaining a much smaller splash pad.
Yeah.
You have things you have to weigh out when you do that. Smaller splash pads can be on a potable water system, so they no longer have chemicals. They're just on our water system. They're not recirculating water.
We've seen, we've seen that in places we've been where they would have even, almost like neighborhood parks and they'd have a splash pad in the, in the park. And you turn it on by hitting a button and it stays on for a certain period of time and, and whatnot. I think we've seen them in Denver and we've seen them in Colorado and, and places like that, too. So I was just curious, is, because it's got to cost a whole lot less to do that.
Yeah, it's probably about a third of the cost of this one, to build a small one.
Okay.
I think the reason we looked at this model, and I think this price is negotiable. We haven't entered into a contract with them. This is us looking at a lot of different scenarios, is we're wanting to replace something and give an amenity for our entire community that includes age, age brackets for kids all the way up to twelve years old. So that you're getting a similar age coverage that you have now and maybe even younger than you have now with the amenities they're, they're suggesting within the plan. But we haven't sat down and negotiated or scaled this at all, so that could be done.
What occurred to me, we've got two main parks in town, this one and, and then the, the J C Optimus Park out on the northwest side of town. And those are the two biggest parks that we've, we've got. And, uh, I would just think that there might be a possibility, something to look at, anyway.
Absolutely.
And we're taking a pool away, put in a splash park, and what if you had another smaller splash park, excuse me, splash park somewhere else? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, we don't need any action on that today. Moving on to the second item here, consider approval of phase three of Steenville City Park Inclusive Playground. Mr. Trussell, that'd be you again.
We're looking for, we're seeking approval right now to go ahead and start phase three and get the materials ordered, the playground ordered for that phase of the park. That's our final phase of the inclusive playground. I think we've been on this project about four years at least. I've been here for three and it was started before I got here. So we're, we've received some money recently from Parkland Dedication. That money will be used to finish this phase out. We've gone over that with Monica. We have the money available to finish it. It's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do the final phase of the park. So we're just seeking approval so we can move forward and get this stuff ordered and phased in.
Any questions for Darren on this?
That, that funding is in this year's budget or?
It's actually gonna be...
It's not in this year's budget, but I'll add it to the budget amendments that, um, I...
Okay, that's through Parkland Dedication fees?
Yes.
Yes.
Recently, the funds arrived through development that will take care of the cost of the park.
Okay.
So yes, the money is there.
Money is there.
We're, we're asking to move forward where it can then be appropriated to this project.
Got you. The price change is about ten percent year-over-year, so we're just looking to get it done this fiscal year so we can maintain our price.
Is this the final phase?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any questions for Darren?
I make the motion that we approve the finishers of phase three of the all-inclusive playground.
Second.
Hold on one second.
She's not on.
You're not on this committee.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll stick to it.
Thank you, Mr. Nix. My motion's been made in second.
Details, details.
Any other discussions? All those in favor say aye.
All right, thank you.
That will move on. Thank you, Mr. Trussell. That'll move on to council with a positive recommendation. Next up, public health and safety committee, we're gonna pull that due to not having a quorum and move on to tourism. Ms. Erphey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. We actually have Steenville Clark Regional Airport Quarterly Update first on our agenda.
Good evening, city councilors. How are y'all? Wanted to start off with, on, start off with the airport layout plan runway extension update. On April fourteenth, KSA held the second planning advisory committee meeting and a public information meeting was held later that day. And Council Nix was there. Thank you for coming to that again. And on the twenty, on April twenty-eighth, the process for an airport survey project as part of the airport layout plan began and that wrapped up on May twelfth. A gentleman came out with some surveying equipment with his truck, set him up various places around the airport. A gentleman came out with some surveying equipment with his truck, set him up various places around the airport, gathered his data, said thank you, and took off. Uh, a third, uh, public planning advisory committee meeting will be held late May, early June. Still waiting to hear back from KSA, one of the KSA staff is now out on paternity leave with his first child, so when he gets back, we'll get, we'll narrow down on a date. And, uh, KSA will also present the final air- airport layout plan draft to the airport advisory board to recommend to council for final approval, and a special board meeting will be held if necessary. And the, the pro- the project is progressing smoothly, uh, on schedule, should be, or should be able to submit to TaxDOT in late June and, uh, FA approval is expected in July.
Do they have any questions, comments?
A lot of time coming.
Yes.
Are there other hoops that we've not been told about yet? They just keep, they keep, seem to find things.
So far, no.
Okay.
We do have a new, uh, uh, TaxDOT planner with TaxDOT Aviation. Uh, his name's Christian Cox, very knowledgeable guy, very responsive with Daryl and I. And it's, it seems like if, if, uh, another hoop gets, you know, has to jump through, he takes the hoop away, it seems like, so.
Okay, good.
So.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
No, I've got
Oh, I'm sorry.
Four slides, yeah. So the tree removal update from last time I was here, uh, you could see, we have a before. On April tenth, uh, I took these two pictures standing where the taxiway meets runway, the ru- uh, runway three-two N, so we have before and after, as you can see, all the trees are gone. Uh, and then with the, on the next slide, uh, these are our aircraft operations, the highest number in a day each month. So January, we had thirty-seven, February, we had forty-seven aircraft, on March, uh, in March, we had sixty-four, and that was the day of the fly-in earlier this year, and in April, we had forty-seven. This time last year, we were, it would, the norm was high twenties, low thirties. So now we're on the low end, high thirties, and reaching up into the mid-sixties, so getting up there in numbers. Then, uh, next slide, please. For courtesy car use, I keep track of how many times it's used each month. And so far, in January, thirty-eight, February, forty-nine, March, forty-eight, April, thirty-three. Uh, not the highest we've seen, but I attribute that to the foul weather we've had lately, just lots of thunderstorms and also in the winter, like, you know, uh, winter weather, not ideal to fly in. And, uh, oh, and so last but certainly not least, uh, last week, the Texas Airports Council held the Airport One-O-One. It wa- the venue was the E-Rath County Annex. We had thirty, uh, thirty-five attendees, uh, three of which were from Steenville, but thirty-two people came from around the state uh, to, uh, to have this event that was put on by the Texas Airports Council. And the reviews were raving. Uh, the Bryant Airport Manager told me this particular one set the bar for going forward, for the venue, the content, the presentations, everything. So, and a lot of people said this is about their first time to Steenville, they loved it here. And, uh, they, you know, they said, hey, if we ever had one here again, nobody would object.
Perfect.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your input. And then, Mr. Brown, what's your?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. Uh, Main Street is the next item, and Ashley Thomas, who's our Main Street Manager, is out, uh, attending a conference. But, um, uh, she gave me great notes to provide for you all in the presentation. As well as Dr. Rita Cook, uh, the chairperson for the Main Street Advisory Board is here as well, and so thank you, Rita, for, for being here. But you have there in, in your packet, information about the Main Street, uh, you know, uh, our, our mission and what we're trying to do. Uh, the four points that we continue to try to work on is the design and the, uh, economic vitality of the organization and promotion. Just this past, oh, two weeks ago, I believe, uh, we found out that, uh, Main Street America had, had awarded, uh, Steenville with the accredited program. Now, we have been an affiliate since the program started. But one of the challenges that the board had set out, uh, for, for us was, advisory board was for us to get to that next level. And there we, we've made it, uh, to the accredited, uh, program. Doesn't give us any more money, Mr. Nick's in a pocket, but it does give us the fact that Steenville is doing a great job, wouldn't you say, Ms. Cook, in what we're doing as far as our Main Street, uh, program? Next slide. Then you have the four points that you've talked about. I will say that, um, staying on top of the design, the economic vitality, organization and pro- promotion, just, uh, last week, two weeks ago, the advisory board met and they did a walk-around, uh, downtown to see what areas and things we might need to focus on and improve and make recommendations to the council, and I'm sure that's gonna be coming forward, uh, soon. But the advisory board's working hard to make sure that we're staying on target with, uh, uh, the criteria and the things that we need to do for Main Street. So Main Street's been busy, doing some things. Uh, you see that, uh, uh, we have T-shirts that are now designed, uh, featuring our downtown, uh, the bricks there and the cowboy capital of the world, uh, the, the new planters that are in and the new plants there, thanks to, uh, Belle Dall, uh, Love Along Landscape and Darren Carpenter, who helped design those, and so those are beautification projects. Uh, the Memorial Day banners are up, since, and you all were, were, uh, instrumental in getting that started, uh, last year, and so they're up again, uh, in tribute there. Uh, we still continue to have our downtown cleanups, uh, we had an, uh, organization help us get that done. And then the, uh, uh, last but not least, the, uh, boot statue has arrived, and it's over here in the downtown plaza. Uh, a, another part of our projects that's been taking place for, for Main Street. You'll also see that we, uh, have had, uh, you know, we had the Martin Luther King, uh, tribute breakfast. We sent out thirty-five hundred letters, uh, at the beginning of the semester to, to students, welcoming them to, uh, to, to Tarleton and to Steenville. You'll see next to it, we've, uh, this year, we're gonna put a little neat idea, we've got a yifty gift card and where we're gonna be sending it to these parents and students, inviting them to come do business locally, uh, preferably downtown and our downtown merchants. So we're gonna be promoting them through the letter that we'll send out this upcoming, uh, September. But there's been new trash cans ordered, we had a Cinco, um, um, Cincoville, which was a great turnout for people. Alley Bingo has really been it, uh, over here, and so people are coming downtown, doing thing and participating, uh, in the Main Street programs. Oh, sorry for the confusion there on the slide, but you, it's clear on your packet. But we do have about four vacant buildings downtown, uh, that's been used as storage or without a name. Uh, we've, uh, have ended up conducting a parking survey, uh, which was, uh, asked by our, uh, council last, last time. And so we're, we're finding out that we've got about forty percent, uh, of our parking spots that are never taken. So we've got plenty of spaces for people, uh, to park downtown. We continue to have downtown hall meetings, we have those on the last Monday of the month where we invite our local merchants and so forth to come down and talk to us and make sure we're all on the same page, uh, and, and getting things done and they know about promotions and activities and events. We continue to have the Cars and Coffee at the Courthouse, the Farmers and Artisan Market be scheduled for June seventh. And then again, like I said, our Alley Bingo is gonna be on June thirteenth at six P.M. And that's gonna conclude the Main Street, uh, program, uh, presentation, Ms. Erp.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Anybody have any questions or comments? Thank you, sir.
Keep looking for that extra dollar, Mr. Brown.
And next we have our tourism update with Ally.
Hi there, everyone, thank you for having me. Um, so first I wanted to thank y'all for y'all's support in the, getting the tourism friendly designation, so that was really exciting that we got to do that a couple of weeks ago. Um, but yeah, I was told that some of these slides are a bit jumbled up, so they're in your packet, they look much prettier there. So, let's go ahead and just get started with it. And so, but the first thing that I wanted to talk about was, um, the numbers. So this is a, um, a competitive set performance and for how, and what's displayed in the chart is, um, um, it displays the estimate of how we should have done in regards to hotel occupancy in twenty-two, in twenty-twenty-four compared to how we actually performed regards to hotel occupancy. So, if you look, um, all the way on the, I'm gonna read it from left to right. So, um, the places that we've identified as our competitors are Granberry Mineral Wells, um, Glen Rose and Weatherford. And we're just comparing to see how we, um, perform regards to like hostel, hotel stays and everything and that. Um, if you would probably go to the next slide and then the one after that. Perfect, okay. So I just wanna zoom in here for a little bit. Um, so again, reading from left to right, the first, um, set of numbers displays how many hotel rooms each city has. And in twenty-twenty-four, we had four hundred and fifty-five rooms available in Steenville. And then up there at the very bottom, you can see like the totals and everything. So if you go to the next slide. And, all right, so in a three hundred and sixty-five day period, if we're open every single day of the year, the fourth column, it shows how many hotel stays we have available for the entire year. And then the same math goes down, um, is for the same down there with the totals and everything. All right, if you go to the next slide. Awesome. So the total number of hotel rooms available that we had in twenty-twenty-four, um, in the entire, in the entirety of the, of the area and the competitive set is one million three hundred, um, one million thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-five rooms. And in Steenville, we had one, one hundred and sixty-six thousand seventy-five of those rooms. So our piece of the pie is, we should estimate to have about fifteen point nine seven percent of that, of those rooms, to be occupied. And then at the end, um, of twenty-twenty-four, we determined whether we did, um, worse than that or we did a lot better. Can you go to the next slide? Awesome. So now if we keep looking to the right, um, we, this is actually, this is how we actually did in twenty-twenty-four. We actually got seventeen point three percent of the, of the pie. So we did about like a point and a half better than we were estimated to do. Uh, and that is equal to one hun- one hundred and two thousand six hundred and ninety-seven rooms sold. And so, we also had a sixty-two percent of our rooms occupied in twenty-twenty-four. So that was really exciting, if you go to the next slide. But yeah, there's that. And then with that, um, too, we had the highest average cost per hotel room at one hundred and eight dollars and forty-seven cents. So we did very well last year in regards to hotel stays, even with having a higher estimated price. So that's really great, and that's also a thanks to Tarleton and then just everyone who helps bring people into Steenville. All right, so now let's talk about events and other things that will like, that will hopefully bring people into town. Um, so, Mule Fest is coming up very quickly, it's gonna be here in about a week, two weeks. So for those of you who don't know, Mule Fest is a, is a festival that started as a celebration of the dairy industry in Steenville. We want to support and highlight the dairy industry in this way, and it's a highly beloved event. Um, and Mule Fest will be from June fifth through the seventh. Mule Fest occurs the first weekend of June every year. And so, there will be concerts Thursday, Friday and Saturday night, and then Friday and Saturday, there, there, there's going to be vendors, food trucks and all sorts of fun, kids activities like mutton busting, a kid's zone, fun educational activities, um, that are dairy-related, and then the carnival, and then also the beloved butt sketch is gonna be there, too. So that's really exciting. Um, so, um, spread the word, bring your family members, tell them to come stay in our hotels and all those good things for, come to Mule Fest. All right. Now, um, Make Music Day. This, um, is an idea that, um, Ashley Thomas and I kind of came up with. So, Make Music Day is an international holiday that actually started in France. And it is a day designated to celebrate the art of music, whether it's a concert, a music lesson, or someone just playing guitar in their front lawn. Um, it's just a day all about just celebrating music. Um, I hea- I heard about this, um, holiday through our music-friendly certification. And, um, the way that we are celebrating in Steenville is we're having businesses around town host artists to play and to just have music going around all day, that's kind of the, the vibe and the image, um, that we wanna project. Um, and so a couple of weeks ago, um, we sent out a call for artists to sign up for, that they would wanna be a part of Make Music Day and that they would be open to playing out of business. And so, and then on, um, May fourteenth, we sent out an email for businesses to sign up around, um, to, like, kind of select their artists. And so we already have lists of artists gathered, and so now they're just picking it and then telling us what time. And then if businesses don't wanna use anyone on the list, or if they have someone of their own, then they can, um, they can just let us know and we'll put them on a schedule, which will be really fun. And then, yeah, and then next, yes, so Western Heritage. Um, you can't really say it great because the wording's kinda covered, but this is the ad that we're gonna have in the Cheyenne Frontier, Frontier Days program. And so we're super excited for that, and just kind of displaying that Steenville, rodeo ville, um, rodeo cowboy capital of the world. Um, it's, that people just need to come here for that, like cowboy culture and everything, so yeah. Um, and this is actually gonna be on the front inside cover, is what I was told, so that will be really exciting. All right, that's all that I have for you. Would you all have any questions for me?
Questions?
Okay, thank you so much.
I appreciate you. So yeah, I'm gonna add to what she said about the Cheyenne, that, um, that'll be the, the whole cover, that's not just a little blip, that'll be the whole inside cover. And I was looking it up, I think it's like sixty-five thousand people go to that rodeo in the timeframe that between the rodeo, the concerts, the, everything that they have involved with it, so. So, lastly, for my, sorry. I would like to speak to y'all about the possibility of, um, a advertising idea that we came up with. I met with Jason and Doug months and months ago. Doug and, Doug and I discussed it, he's mentioned it in different council meetings and such. And it would be a, um, forty thousand dollar, um, amount for advertising to promote the Western Heritage of Steenville, not just a specific rodeo or at a specific rodeo. This would actually be a situation where four people, two men, two women, would wear our patches, have their patches, have our logos and everything on their rodeo rigs, whether it be a trailer or their Capri camper or their van, whatever they're traveling in. We'll have our, um, logos and everything on it, all of their, when they are winning, because the four that the Western Heritage Board has narrowed it down to, um, all four are world champions. One of them is a current world champion. Um, they have all been world champions within the last four years. So, this would be a chance that they're fixing to head into their summer run, which will start, probably, they'll leave town the first of June, first week of June, and crisscross across America with our information all over them. So when they're interviewed, they will talk about Steenville, when their bio will, we will be one of their official sponsors. And, um, we have some other things coming up with the PRCA that I've been speaking to them about, about doing another promotional commercial, and these four people would be, if they accept, would be, um, a part of that commercial as spokesmen and women for us. This year, we made the, the selection, ne- if we can do this. Next year, we would like to make it where it's an application process. And so, I think once word gets out, what we're trying to do, I think we would have substantial applications for this. The biggest requirement was they had to claim Steenville as their hometown. There's several other major, well, they're rodeos, they're not towns, that are sponsoring athletes right now that are not from the towns that they're sponsoring. And so, that was my biggest thing. We're covered up in rodeo athletes all around, which is amazing, and so And so, but that was my biggest, I wanted them to be from Stephenville. Any questions?
Uh, yes. I, um, my, I, I, I sense my vision of this is something like, you could almost compare it to NASCAR.
Exactly like that.
The drivers of NASCAR, and their cars and, and so forth, where you're seeing logos from different sponsors that they have, uh, on their jackets, on their vests, and things like that.
Right.
And that's what you're talking about, really.
Exactly. The biggest benefit to us being their sponsor though, is that whereas all those other sponsors, they might thank them in interviews or whatever, but every time their name is, is shown, it's gonna say Stephenville, Texas. And then it's gonna show their shirt, their, you know, you could drive down the street here, I would say probably every thirty minutes, and see a rodeo rig that has sponsorships on it. And those will go all over, from one side of the United States to the other, and north and south, with our name on it, and our rodeo ville, and so.
So the next thing I would, and would suppose, that it's just, if we approve this, and if the council ends up approving this, it would be, then it's a matter of putting together a good contract, negotiating that contract out.
Yes.
And so that, the deliverables, if you will.
Yes.
Uh, whether it's how many rodeos they go to, or how many, you know, how many, uh, how many times Stephenville is in front of you, I guess is what I'm getting at. And, uh, and to be able to report that back.
Right. So since we didn't do a, um, application process, because we were, this didn't start until January, um, I will get with Randy before, if this is approved, then work on getting an actual contract. This year, I mean, there will be stipulations, and those, the four that we discussed, or that I took to Western Heritage Board, was that the patch is displayed on the shirt, and it is also displayed on their traveling vehicle, name recognition in all interviews, and use of their image in our rodeo ville publicity. So, for this year. Now, on the contract, I've looked up probably ten different major companies that are sponsoring, all kinds of NASCAR, to rodeo, to all of it, um, that have a lot of stip, more stipulations. There's some, but we just couldn't get that done, because we wanted to get their, these patches on and these stickers on before they left for the summer. Because it is, I mean, there will be at least three of these people, that they may go to ten rodeos in ten days. So, and once they leave Stephenville in June, some of them may not be back till August or September. So, wanted to, yes, sir.
Interesting concept.
Part of the stipulation, I would think, would need to be that they are going to compete as, as frequently as possible, barring injury or things like that. But, you know, that, that's something that you, you don't wanna provide this and then, then sit the season out, in other words.
Yes, sir. Well, I can't say the names yet, because there is some situations with that. But I can tell you that, um, all four of them are, like I said, one of them is a current world title holder. Um, they are all in the top twenty-five right now, but the season is just about to get going. So, um, I think we're, I think the four that the Western Heritage Board and myself have put together, and Mr. Brown has put together, have, will represent us very well.
Good, good.
So.
Funding source?
I'm sorry?
Funding source?
It would be hot tax.
Okay.
For, um, advertising.
Okay.
Because we are advertising us all over.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'd just remind council and anybody else, those funds are completely separate from any other funds from the city.
Mm-hmm.
They aren't.
Yes.
Those, those dollars aren't competing with general fund dollars.
Right.
We're very limited in what those can be spent on in the first place. All has to relate to, uh, with the end result being putting, uh, as they phrase it in Austin, putting heads in beds. Uh, so we, we can't spend it on street repairs, or any other general fund kind of dollars. It's, it's on a separate fund directly related to tourism.
Yes, thank you. So, any other questions, comments, concerns? Then I would like to make the motion that we take to council the approval of the forty thousand dollars for advertising from the hot funds to sponsor rodeo athletes.
Seconded.
I think I'm on that committee.
You were not on this committee, sir.
You're not? I was gonna say, thank you, Ellen.
Yeah. I can.
Yes, sir, thank you. All in favor?
Uh, I'll vote in this one, even though I'm not on it.
Okay, so that will go to council with positive recommendation. And that's all I have. Mr. Mayor, pro temp?
Fantastic, thank you, ma'am. Uh, I will now, um, adjourn the, uh, committee meeting and reconvene the special council meeting. Uh, first item on, I'm getting my sheets mixed up, hold on one second. First item on the agenda back would be tourism.
Okay, here we are, item four. Which would be, yes. Yeah. So obviously, we, that was committed, it's going to council with positive recommendation. So I would like to make the recommendation that we spend hot funds, forty thousand dollars of hot funds for advertising and sponsoring for rodeo athletes.
And that's a motion out of our commission, correct?
Can I second that one?
I'm sorry?
That's a motion, correct?
Yes, sir.
Cut.
You can.
You can. Alright, I've got a motion by Ms. Turfy, and a second by Mr. Nix. Any other discussion?
I just have a hard time with us not knowing who these four athletes are. That's my only thing, that's my only holdup, is who, who are they? And there needs to be more of an application process, and I understand why we, you've chosen, and we don't have time, because it's limited. But it just feels like we're just picking four, not saying friends, but four people for a ten thousand dollar sponsorship. And I just, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around it. I think it's a great innovative thinking moving forward. I just, that's my only holdup right now, is how we've gotten to these four people.
Were they, were they come from the, for the heritage?
They came from the Western Heritage Advisory Board. I, I understand a little bit why we're not ready to name them, because not all the negotiations are. But on that Western Heritage Advisory Board, and they're appointed by you guys, you have people from the professional rodeo industry.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, so I feel very confident in the, they certainly know more about that world than, than I do.
Well, and, um, I'll just be completely honest with you. There's only one on this board, I mean, on this list, that I've ever even met. And, um, the rest of them, I, were recommended in Western Heritage, and by me sitting down on the PRCA website, and going through and looking for every single thing, every single event on who was from Stephenville, and then presenting, because I presented it to the Western Heritage Board. And then, um, going through and seeing, are they healthy, are they traveling now, are they, all of that. The other part that, while we're not announcing who they are at this point, was because I didn't wanna go to these four people and say, I wanna do this, until I knew that we could do this. I wasn't gonna put their hopes up for this amount of money, because this amount of money makes a huge difference in a rodeo athlete's life. And travel, the amount of traveling that these four do. And because there might be a situation, I know in three of them, there is not. But one of them, there might be a situation where I actually have to go through their manager to, to make the money work. The other three have, um, do not have managers. I've had that conversation. Do you wanna add to that, Mr. Brown?
Okay. And Jason noted it earlier, that these are hot funds, we're limited on how we can spend them. It's not coming out of our general fund, it's not coming out of any other budget. But this is completely separate money, that we're very limited on how we can actually spend these funds.
So I had somebody else ask this question. And I, I explained it, of we're basically having four billboards that are gonna cross, no telling how many thousands and thousands of miles those four billboards are gonna go across all over. And.
You're talking about their trucks.
Their truck, yes.
Trailers and so forth.
Yes.
Alright, so we have a motion and second, uh, on the table. Uh, is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Alright. Thank you so much, Ms. Turfy.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to planning zoning commission, uh, this would be consider authori, authorizing the city manager to initiate negotiations and earn a professional services agreement with Kendig Keast, collaborative for updating the city's land use regulations. I know it says Steve, but Mr. King.
Yes, I'll take this one.
Give us a, an overview on, uh, on what we're discussing here, uh, not only for council, but for the public as well, please, sir.
Absolutely. Uh, so everybody remembers the last meeting, a couple of weeks ago, uh, and this item was up. Uh, if I remember correctly, the original motion, uh, was to table it and add a workshop on the comprehensive plan. That motion failed for lack of a second. Uh, after some more discussion, uh, then there was a motion to approve it. That was seconded, but then that motion failed on no votes. Uh, the mayor suggested a, that I conduct a, a land use workshop, uh, sometime in the future. Uh, I indicated to some of y'all that I was a little bit lost at that point on what, what direction we were going, uh, because we did have a new, a council adopted comprehensive plan, but we have land use codes that were conflicting with that. And we have developers that come in every day and, and those things. Uh, so since that time, I have followed up with each of you to get some feedback on, you know, where, where we might go with a workshop, what your concerns were, what, what we were looking for if we were to kind of head down that road. Uh, what I really got back was, uh, hey, you know, kind of upon further reflection, really didn't have any issues with the comprehensive plan, and didn't have any issues with moving forward, uh, with redoing the, the land use ordinances. Uh, and so after those conversations, uh, we've recycled this back to the agenda that I, uh, to discuss again, uh, authorizing, uh, me to enter into negotiations with Kendig Keast. If you remember from the last meeting, Mr. Killen had done a request for qualifications, uh, received four firms, I believe, five firms, uh, had a scoring committee, uh, made up of staff and council. And after the scoring was done, uh, Kendig Keast came out as the number one firm. And so if you guys approve, then we would enter into negotiations. If we feel like that number is the right number, then we would come back to you and ask you to authorize executing a contract for that amount. Now, you know, in, in conversations, uh, some of you, some citizens, this process is gonna be a lot like the comp plan. It's gonna take a hot minute. Uh, I think most of the timelines I saw were anywhere from, you know, eighteen months, it's kind of that range. I would expect that. Remember, the comprehensive plan is kind of a giant philosophical document that says, here's how, where we wanna go. And that was done with a group of, uh, what, over twenty citizens that were appointed by council to work on that, along with our consultant, our staff members. Uh, the land use codes would be the action as part of that, that says, th, these are the rules that actually head that way. Uh, now I know each of you maybe like some things more in the comp plan, some things less, some of you may completely dislike things in the comp plan. Well, the, the development of the land use codes would be kind of how you bring that together. Uh, for example, uh, I know in, in the last meeting, we kind of got in a discussion about complete neighborhood and what that meant. And talking about that definition included different types of residential. Uh, it included some commercial uses, retail uses. Uh, and so you kind of, you start thinking, oh my gosh, is that gonna be like a big box store next to houses? Well, I guess if you wrote land use codes that allowed that, then certainly. But I don't, I would not think that's what anybody was envisioning. But if you remember, a few years ago, we had a zoning conversation over here on Charlton Street. And in that discussion, uh, some council members said, you know, hey, I remember when we used to have neighborhood stores, you know, mixed into that neighborhood. And so, you know, when, when they were kids, you know, they, they had kind of corner stores to go to that weren't far from their houses. Well, under current codes, if you're all zoned as a neighborhood, well, you couldn't mix that back in. And, and the, the conversation that night had been, man, would it be great if we could kind of go back that direction. Well, in the current codes, you really couldn't, you'd have a difficult time. So again, maybe that, that would be part of the discussion, is you redo these land use codes, and you try to determine, what do we want, complete neighborhood, what does that mean? We know kind of what the definition in the comp plan is, but again, that's kind of an overarching umbrella. This part of it is the job to determine exactly what that would mean or not mean. Uh, and so, again, we're asking to kind of start going down that road. Uh, because we do need, we do need to bring our land use codes kind of along the direction of, of where we've headed with the comp plan. Uh, but again, what that looks like, how wide, how narrow those margins are, uh, will ultimately be up to this body. Uh, but this, this will go through much the same process. One of my hopes in doing this is, I, I want us to have a Stephenville product. I feel like, um, in, in the six years I've been at City Hall, and really dived into our current ones, and I've gone back and looked at some of our previous ones throughout the years, and maybe they're not, maybe it just feels this way. I, I feel like they're a little bit of what I call a canned product, uh, that they were meant to, you know, fit whatever, you know, any city, change the name. The problem is, they don't fit any city, and sometimes they don't, certainly don't fit us. Uh, one of the problems I have with our current ones is specifically our older parts of town with, uh, you know, seems like all the setback requirements, and right-of-way requirements, and things like that were meant for raw, undeveloped land. And when you try to apply those standards in older, denser neighborhoods, it almost can make lots undevelopable if somebody tries to, you know, to, to improve one. And I certainly know that wasn't any council's intent, it's not staff's intent. And so I, we go through this, I, I would like us to come out on the backside with something that's uniquely Stephenville, that everybody can agree on, fits our community, and, and how it needs to develop as it, as it moves forward, and creates those action items, and those actual rules that fits that. If that all makes sense to everybody.
Any questions, Mr. King? It's the pleasure of council.
Well, Mr. Mayor, pro temp, I would move that we authorize the city manager to initiate the negotiations, and enter into a professional services agreement with Kendig Keast, collaborative for upholding, updating the city's land use regulations, and then coming back to the council with, uh, a, uh, recommendation.
Seconded.
Got a motion by Ms. Cook, a second by Ms. Turfy. Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, pro temp, I, I think I derailed this discussion in an earlier conversation. And I, I understand, Mr. King and I have had a lengthy conversation about this, and I agree completely with what he says. We, as a council, are going to have to be more responsible for this product, how it's going to fit with our culture and our city, and looking at the future, what it's going to do specifically to the, some of the older neighborhoods, to some of the commercial areas, and some of the newer neighborhoods that are on the drawing board right now. And some of the concepts of, of the comprehensive plan, in my opinion, will fit much better there, because they can be developed there intentionally, and the people that live there, work there, et cetera, will understand that when they move in. One of the biggest problems I had with it, and still have with it, is when you start trying to implement that in existing neighborhoods, the people that bought their homes in those neighborhoods thought that this was going to be how that neighborhood remained for as long as they owned that property. This is going to change that dynamic to at least a certain extent. But we have control over that, and the way it's implemented, and the way this plan is written will control how it's implemented. So, I, I think it's significant that we, that we do it. We have the comprehensive plan, and I don't think we can throw it out, and I don't, I don't know that that's a good idea. But at the same time, there's parts of it that are going to be very, very poor fit for our community, I'm afraid. But I think if, if we're willing to put the work into this, it should move forward in such a way that we can implement that plan and serve our community well. And looking at what our community will be fifteen, twenty, thirty years from now, what we do now is going to influence that significantly. It's either going to change it for the better, or it's going to change it for the worse. It's not going to remain like it is, I recognize that, but it's going to go one way or the other, and we have to be conscious of that, and have to be aware of that.
Sir, thank you, Ms. Nix. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Thank you, sir. All right, guys, it is five thirty-six, and I am going to adjourn this, uh, special city council meeting. Thank you very much. Sorry.
Six thirty-seven now.
I was saying good morning earlier, sir.
Yeah, you were, so you missed the other.